All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's great to have you all here this evening. I'll call this regular council meeting to order. If you'd all rise to the invocation that tonight will be led by Pastor David Daniel from the Sebastian Church of God.
Heavenly Father, we want to thank you for this day. Thank you for your love and your mercy. Thank you for Calvary. Thank you for the cross. Thank you, Lord, for America, Lord. We want to thank you for this city. We want to thank you, Lord, for our leaders. And, Lord, we just pray that you would bless this meeting tonight, that you would keep your hand upon us, and that you would give us wisdom, and that you would give it beyond our natural ability. But, Lord, I just pray that you would lead and direct and bless in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right, thank you, Pastor. If you would all remain standing, we're very honored this evening to have with us the Sebastian Charter Junior High School Exchange Club, who will lead us in our pledge. I think I said exchange, didn't I? I'm sorry, guys. Excel. Let's allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for the freedom and justice for all.
Thank you all very much, and thank you for the flags. For some reason, I have Exchange Club on my mind. I'll now go read a proclamation for Freedom Shrine Month. Can you hear that all right? For Freedom Shrine Month, May 2018. Whereas Patrick Henry said that no free government or the blessing of liberty can be preserved by any people without a frequent recurrence of fundamental principles. And whereas this Freedom Shrine has been donated to the city of Sebastian by the Exchange Club of Sebastian to serve as a living symbol of the rich heritage of freedom shared by all Americans. And whereas these 19 reproductions of the original documents provide a glimpse of the spirit of the times, the greatness of our country's forefathers, who wrote the words and the ideals which inspired them. And whereas the most important message this Freedom Shrine brings to us is the great debt we owe to thousands of Americans who fought for and won the freedom we all enjoy today. Now therefore, I, Jim Hill, Mayor of the city of Sebastian, do hereby proclaim May 2018 as Freedom Shrine Month and urge all citizens to revisit the liberty and freedom that we have been given so that succeeding generations will inherit an even finer legacy. In witness herof, I affirm to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Sebastian this 25th day of April, 2018.
You can face whichever way you want.
Hi, I'm Adam Prus, and I'm here with Dr. Jeff Slade. He's our president, our current president. And we're representing our -- some of our wonderful members are here today with the Exchange Club of Sebastian. And we're here to dedicate this Freedom Shrine. And I'm not sure if anyone here remembers or heard of the Freedom Train, but in 1947 there was a traveling exposition of historic American documents that toured the United States shortly after World War II. And two years later, and almost 70 years ago, the National Exchange Club began to install permanent displays of the most significant of these historical documents in communities throughout the nation so that all Americans would have access to their rich heritage. Today, thousands of Freedom Shrines have been dedicated to and are displayed proudly in our schools and universities, libraries and government buildings and other public places. Our Freedom Shrine includes documents such as the Mayflower Compact, the Declaration of Independence, the United States Constitution, the Bill of Rights, the Northwest Ordinance, the Gettysburg Address, the Emancipation Proclamation, and many more. And the Exchange Club of Sebastian has chosen to dedicate several of these shrines throughout our community to remind our local citizens that freedoms we enjoy today must be cherished and protected. It is our hope that by having such an upfront and personal exposure to these documents, they will better understand and appreciate the freedoms we all too often take for granted.
Thank you all so much. And what a beautiful display we have. It's in the hallway here at City Hall. I can't thank the Exchange Club enough for it. And, you know, I would really like to remind all citizens that those documents that are on that wall are incredibly important to not only our past but our future. So we should all know and understand every one of those documents. And we now have a presentation for the 25th anniversary of the Sebastian Exchange Club Foundation Blue Water Open Charity Offshore Fishing Tournament. I'm told you're giving a presentation.
You're supposed to come down and do a proclamation for us, too.
Oh, you get no proclamation.
You didn't know that? I go tell him, Jim, what to do again. I'm Michael Natali. I'm the co-chair of the Blue Water. Let me start from scratch, okay? The Sebastian Exchange Club Foundation's Blue Water Open Charity Offshore Fishing Tournament 2018. It's our 25th anniversary, and on behalf of the Exchange Club of Sebastian, we want to present this to the city for their support, as they have for many years, helped us out with our tournament by donating their police force to do things for us and allowing us to use some of their facilities. So on behalf of us, we'd like to thank you and much appreciate it for what you guys do.
Thank you. Now, this is a wonderful event here in the city of Sebastian. It's something that really instills pride in this community, and that was a great presentation. Thank you. That leads us up to brief announcements.
We only have one tonight. On May 5th, the Craft Club of Sebastian will be doing their show in River View Park from 10 to 3.
All right, thank you. Are there any other announcements from council members?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure. I think we skipped roll call.
It may. Oh, my goodness. I'm sorry, I've got so many things scribbled out in here. My bad. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Here.
Councilmember Dodd.
Here.
Councilmember Avino.
Here.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Here.
All right, thank you. We need to go through all that other stuff again?
No.
All right, good. Any agenda modifications this evening? Hearing none. That moves us to the consent agenda?
Move approval.
I'd like to pull Item D, please.
Oh, sorry. Item D?
Item David is pulled. Can I get a motion on the remainders?
Move approval of Items A, B, C, E, and F.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor? Oh, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Councilmember Avino.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Yes.
Mayor Hill.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Councilmember Dodd. Item D.
Okay, Item D. I don't necessarily have an issue with the information in the document or in our agenda at Item D, except that the police chief is, in our organizational structure, a department head, basically. And we don't have employment agreements with any of our department heads. So I'm thinking that if we're going to have an employment agreement with one department head, we may well want to consider the possibility of having employment agreements with all the department heads, as opposed to having just one out of the group of department heads under an employment agreement. So it's basically an issue from a personnel management perspective. If you're going to create individual employment agreements with one person on a level in an organization, then that is probably a trigger to do it for all people on that organizational level.
Any other thoughts?
I think the chief of police is a unique position, so I don't have a problem with it in that particular case.
I'm in agreeance with that. I don't think that we need to have it for all the other department heads. The chief is definitely a unique position. It's not the same as Public Works or any of the other places, so I don't have an issue with it either.
Yeah, I believe this is a pretty unique situation with the chief being employed by the city for so many years. And I understand fully the move to go forward and get this locked up. I have no problems with this, and I do think that if you feel that there is some potential need for department heads to have contracts, then I suppose conversations with the new city manager as to how he wants to deal with his department heads would be appropriate.
Yeah, I mean, that would be a sense of counsel. And if I just bring this up, if the rest of the council doesn't feel like it's an issue, then I'm not going to stand in the way. But I do bring it up because I feel like that if you're going to take an action against on a level of an organization, that action should be unilateral as opposed to individual.
Okay. Duly noted. Thank you. Can I get a motion on Item D, please?
I move approval of Item 8D.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Would you like to take public input on that item?
Seeing none, no one gave any indication that they were wanting it. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dodd.
No.
Councilmember Avino.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Yes.
Mayor Hill.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. No, actually, committee reports and appointments. Does anyone have any reports this evening on their committees? None will move to Item 10. No public hearings, no unfinished business. Move just Item 12, public input. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on a matter this evening other than something that's on the agenda? All right, seeing none, we will move on to Item 13, new business. 13, approve modification to golf course restaurant concession agreement. Mr. Griffin.
Yes, sir. The council's well aware of the evolution we went through to get a new restaurant operator into the golf course restaurant that took place with his opening on the 1st of January 2018. Since then, it's no secret that the restaurant has not been well received. Mr. Campbell, Mr. Wesley Campbell, came to me about a month ago asking for relief on rent, and in exchange for that, there would be a transfer of ownership to the city of certain equipment that he has installed into the restaurant. Bringing this item forward tonight with a modification of the existing lease and recommending approval.
All right, thank you. Council, I know this has a bit of history, this whole golf course lease and the golf course concession situation that we're dealing with out there. I'll go ahead and just start some discussion. I'm concerned about modifying this agreement at this time because I think it's going to take something quite large to fix what is going on at the golf course. It's not going to take just a few months to hopefully get things straightened out. The -- I think the problem that we're sitting in right now is that there's a lot of people that made decisions on what is a golf course snack bar and made those decisions based on it being a full-fledged restaurant due to the fact that the prior tenants in there spent 20 years building up a clientele. So the clientele that was built up over 20 years at that golf course -- should I turn one of these off? The clientele that was built up over 20 years at the golf course was to that one restaurateur. So to expect that the people that are going to the restaurant would just -- that were going to that restaurant would just continue to go to the restaurant, I think is a little bit lofty to expect that the same, you know, the Friday night steak dinners and all that those people had built up, to expect them to just automatically flow into the restaurant, you know, is a big ask. And then to have an understanding of what the client is at the golf course, I think, is incredibly important. Because the golf course is going to generate about 50,000 rounds of golf every year. So we have 50,000 people walking by that building every year. But a golfer, especially a golfer at a municipal golf course, isn't going to a golf course to eat. They're going to a golf course to play golf. They may slide in and grab a burger or a dog and a beer, but their intent is to go to the golf course to play golf. So there's been a lot of mistakes that have been made in this thing. Looking at the relief that's being asked, I can't see how that's going to alleviate the concerns. There's a full-fledged restaurant out there at the golf course, and it's a snack bar. So it's -- I don't know how we're going to fix this, but temporary relief, to me, is simply pushing off the ultimate failure of this property. I'm not sure what the answer is, but I know the answer is bigger than this. It may very well be that this has to be bid out differently. It may very well be that that beautiful restaurant has to be closed Monday through Thursday, every day during the summer, and they just serve out of the snack bar. It may have to be that they're only open during events or on weekends or special events. So there's a lot of different things that have to be worked out, and an understanding of the clientele is critical. I've got about 30 years in golf courses and managing golf courses and assisting facilities. And even private golf clubs who have these beautiful restaurants, they force their members to go to the restaurant by having minimums. The restaurant isn't to draw at the golf course. The golf course is to draw. So I'm a little concerned about doing this. I see this as a temporary fix to get us through the summer, and I don't see anything in here that would show me that there's an understanding of the clientele or anything that would show me how this could be a success.
I completely agree with you. I can't not see why other things can't be done first before we talk about reducing rent. I mean, it's only been open a few months since January. The menu needs to change. The prices needs to change. Maybe he needs to go to one of the other public golf courses and see how they run their restaurant to get the ideas to fix this one. But, I mean, I don't mind it being a restaurant, and he can be open for dinners at night when the golfers aren't there, but he's got to do something during the day to accommodate the golfers because they are mad.
Okay. I tend to agree with what's been said, but I have a slight different view of it. And my view is that there's a business model that was approved during the bidding process and was selected, and that business model's not working. And we signed the lease understanding that business model. And we didn't sign a lease for a snack bar. We signed a lease for a full-blown restaurant, and the business model was implemented, and it's not working. I agree 100% with that. It's not working. So I'm just -- I'm looking at this like anybody who has a potential liability that we're looking at, in that I would tend to be willing to talk about potential relief between now and the 1st of November of this year, not beyond that, in an attempt to have the business model modified. I think we're really probably looking at the situation where if we don't take some steps to try to provide the restaurant owner an opportunity to try to solve his business model problems and change it, that we're really looking at that restaurant closing within the next couple of months. And then we're stuck with the liability of purchasing from him the things that he's done. We're stuck with trying to find an operator for the restaurant at the level it is. And our liability is greater than the cost would be if we were to provide some rent relief for the next five months as opposed to just walking away. It's very easy to take a hard stand. Sometimes it's more difficult to think about what's the problem and can we try to come to a solution. I would not be willing to do anything with the lease beyond this summer unless there was a business model change that did something like the mayor just said, close the restaurant during part of the week. Well, that's a definite business model change that might warrant us looking at the lease as that takes place. But I do think we should provide an opportunity for them to try to change their business model to work. I agree that the golfers, the ones I've talked to and the ones that have sent emails, are not happy. Some of those are those six gourches on our sign that come into city, and I don't know what we can do to make them happy. We could give free beer away and not make them happy. But I do think I would tend to be willing to lean towards some rent relief or some lease payment relief for the next five months and an opportunity for the owner of the restaurant to try to change his business model to see if he can't create a successful. Nobody complains about the food. The complaint is the golfers and the service. And so it's just a matter of having to rethink that business model. We could probably hash all day long what could be changed, you know? Could you change the beer prices? Could you do this? That's his responsibility. That's his business. It's his responsibility to come up with those things. It's not working, so he needs to come up with a business model that can work, or he's not going to be able to stay open. And I tend to think that it might be inappropriate for us to think about the possibility of providing some relief for the next short window of time to assist in that process. There's no sense in making him go out of business in a month and a half and us assume that liability without us seeing whether he can create a new business model that might be able to stay in business.
I agree 100% with what you're saying. And by -- when I'm saying something big has to be done, that's exactly what I'm talking about. We have to throw the lease, the old model that we created, away. But if we do that, would it be fair to all of those others who would be out there wanting to bid on a new business model that could potentially be successful?
Well, we only got two bids on this when we put it out for bid. We received two bids.
Right, based on the model that we had.
And that's right.
So that being impossible to succeed.
And I would be more than willing, you know, if -- I guess when I say I'm willing to give him an opportunity, that's because I think the liability to the city in the next three months is greater if we don't give him the opportunity than if we do. Our liability in the next three to five months, if we give him the opportunity, is about $7,000. Our liability if we have to actually, if he has to close in two months because he already owes us money and so forth, if he has to close in a month, our liability is greater than that. We still, at that point in time, have to go out with an RFP and try to find somebody willing to run the restaurant. Now, I will say that in the interim, what we've managed to do is we've managed to get the building fixed, we've managed to get the restrooms fixed, and up to ADA standards, we've managed to get the kitchen fixed. We're going to talk in a minute about another item, and quite frankly, I don't know how that kitchen ever passed a fire inspection the way it was. The hood didn't work. There was no way that that hood could have suppressed a fire in their -- a grease fire in their stove, on their stove, for example.
They were pouring grease down the drains, down the water drains.
Yeah, down the water drain. So, I mean, we managed to correct all that stuff, so the city now has a -- an attractive, safe operational building, and we've invested some funds in that. And all I'm thinking is that the potential liability to us, it's going to happen if it happens in three months or if it happens in one month. Giving him an opportunity to try to cure his business problems, I don't see it's inappropriate to do that. But I'm not so married to that that I would argue against just saying no. I'm just saying that there is an option that I think that I could support.
And I would say that I understand exactly what you're saying, and I wouldn't want to just say no and walk away and force him to just continue on with this restaurant because I believe that he was under the impression or he had some misconception as to the clientele or the customers that would be going to that facility. I'm not -- I think that the current client in there is an outstanding restaurateur. He's done a great job in the city of Sebastian. He's built an incredible business, and I love his restaurants. The problem is, is that that model cannot be successful at the Sebastian Golf Course. So I wouldn't want to just say, no, we're not doing this. You just go fight for it and make it work. I would want to offer some sort of a reasonable out, if I could, if he doesn't believe that he can make this thing work. You know, get out of the contract now. Let's move forward if that's what you think you need to do because the fact of the matter is the city of Sebastian's the ones that came forward and said, we want this to be a restaurant, and we're going to have this thing built, bid out as a restaurant. And so anyone that comes in and bid is going to be under these stipulations. Those stipulations are what makes this project unsuccessful, not the person who's in the building. And so we are the ones that put those stipulations in place and asked the public to come and bid on them. When we did that, we only had two that came in and bid because of some of those stipulations that may have been in place. So if we're going to make changes to those stipulations, I think it would only be fair to figure out a way to amicably allow the current client in, out of his contract and try to figure out a way to make everyone whole in this and potentially figure out what it is we need to have at that place and rebid it. And that's the only thing I can see that would be fair to any of the other businesses out there in the community who would consider, you know, running the snack bar at the restaurant.
Yeah, you're not going to find any other landlords that are going to give restaurants breaks on their rent in the summer because the northerners are gone. Just doesn't happen.
And but again, the problem is that those people will generally close their doors so they don't have to have staff in place, a cook, a wage staff, and, you know, have the lights on. And so there's an expense to running this restaurant beyond them just being able to unilaterally make decisions that could save them money. They can't do that because of the way we set this contract up. Mr. McPartlin?
Well, I can't support the resolution that's in my packet here, but I'm kind of in the same camp with Mr. Dodd. But I would be looking at, I'd be willing to, the $14,000 that he has in the equipment is give him a year and reduce the rent $1,000 a month to kind of make up. Because, I mean, he has done a tremendous job. I mean, the restaurant was, again, like Mr. Dodd alluded to, I don't think that thing could have passed a health inspection, let alone a fire inspection. It's up and running. It's beautiful. And a little relief, we're actually, we're getting the equipment back, less depreciation or whatever. And that's the route I would be willing to go, drop the rent $1,000 a month, and we secure that $14,000 in equipment if it doesn't work.
The only -- the question I would have, so you would just continue going forward with the stipulations that are --
Well, I mean, the thing right now is, I don't think there's support here to go for what's in here right now. And again, are you going to bring the proprietor up here to negotiate this thing right now? It's going to have to come to us again.
All right, how about if I put a motion on the floor, and then we'll just go from there, all right? I move that we modify the change document on page 67 and 68 of our agenda, that we include Item Number One, which with one change, we change the forgiving date from October 2019 to October 1, 2018. We strike Item Two. We strike Item Three. We keep Item Four in its entirety. And we keep Item Five and Six.
Which ones are we striking again?
So how long are you looking to go the relief for from April?
Well, basically, what that does is it gives him a lease amount of $1,000 a month between now and October of 2018, not 19, this year. And it does the transfer of the equipment to settle outstanding amounts that are required, but it removes the changes to the lease amount after October of 2018, beginning November 1, 2018. It removes that. So there will be no changes with lease amount after October, after November 1, 2018.
So you're talking $1,000 a month, which I brought up to October.
$1,000 a month for the next five, through the end of October. It keeps the existing lease conditions with the exception that we're going to forgive or forbear or whatever the word we want to use, down to $1,000 per month between now and October 2018. That gives the operator an opportunity to announce 2018 to make a decision whether he wants to stay in business or not. And if he can change his business model and decide he wants to, fine. If he can't, then there are outs in the lease. There's basically, we turn over to the attorney and let the attorney negotiate a lease termination.
Mr. Mayor? If -- Mr. Mayor? Yes, go ahead. If I could just clarify one thing. The way Paragraph One was written is it reduced, it did only reduce the rent until October 1, 2018.
Yes.
It put the other amount in forbearance that was then forgiven on October 1, 2019. You understand that?
I understand that.
Okay, so because the thought process was, you know, if --
We will still forgive if he stayed in business.
So --
He stayed in business, so, I, I just, you know, so I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, that.
Yeah, I mean, we're still having to go through that.
That we weren't looking to reduce it until 19, we're just looking to reduce it to 18.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, at, at some point in time, if he chooses, if he can come up with a business model and it's working, then we can decide that we're going to do the forgiving. I mean, we're going to take that, but we'll have to deal with that if it doesn't go. But it reduces his payments under the conditions to a thousand dollars per month between now and October. And it does the equipment transfer, which settles outstanding current outstanding balances.
It's a motion.
All right, second.
All right. Is there anything from the public wishes to speak on this item? All right, seeing none. Um, I...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
If, if I could.
Please.
I, I hear a lot of talking about this gentleman and the owner of the business and I haven't heard one person up here tonight talk about the actual employees. I mean, I'm, I'm going to vote yes on this for sure because if he goes out of business, then we don't have jobs, people don't pay their bills, and now there's issues. And I, I, I thought that before I, I got elected in November, that I heard a lot of, we want to create jobs, we want to make this a, a place for people to live and, and work and, and raise their families and when we haphazardly push people out of the way business-wise and send them on their way and say, well, you've got to close your doors, I, I think we're, we're moving away from that, so.
Okay, thank you. I would, I would suggest to you that I don't think anyone is wanting anyone to go out of business and I don't think that statement was made by any individual on this dais. That is not the goal of anyone up here. My, my understanding is that the goal of the people up here is to try to get that lease to work or to get something successful at the airport because currently, it's not working. I went and had dinner there. I don't know if any of you have had dinner at the restaurant. I went and had dinner there a couple of weeks ago. I got there at seven o'clock. They're required to stay open till eight o'clock. I got there with my family at seven o'clock and we were the only ones there, from seven to eight PM. It's not working and it's not fair to them, the situation they're in. So the only, the only problem I have with, with this is that it does not change the problem. It doesn't, it doesn't take us making this thing a restaurant and bidding it out as a restaurant and change that. So they're going to have to be successful under the current lease as it is. They're just getting a little bit of relief from their rent and they're not, we're not giving them money, they're paying for that relief. So it's not like we're giving them money, but we're not solving the problem. We're just pushing it off.
What, what's your suggestion to solve the problem?
My suggestion to solve the problem, and I think the only thing that would be fair to the community is to actually put a business structure, the city's the ones who are required to just decide how that thing's going to be run. We're the ones who put into place the hours of operation, we're the ones that put into place, you know, the stipulations that are making it very difficult for them to, to run that business. We need to change that. But if we do change that, then we're changing a lease that, that, and, and I'm not sure how fair it would be to anyone else who bid on this project or if there would be any other bidders on it. So when we're making such large changes, I think it only fair to the public that we allow the public to be involved in it. So I, I, I get where you guys are going with it and, and I believe that where it's going will give us time to figure that out because we're going to have to have meetings up here and have the discussions on how this is going to happen going forward. We're going to have to have a reduction in rent. There's no way that restaurant can, can handle $2,500 a month in rent through the summer, through the winter. It's just not going to happen. They, there's no way they should be have, have to have waitstaff and cooks, which they're having difficulty keeping anyway because waitresses don't make money when they don't get tips.
Correct.
And cooks are just sitting in there doing nothing. So when they can't keep the staff anyway, we need to solve the problem. What, what we're doing right now is just pushing it out a little bit. And if we make the major changes that solve that problem, my concern is fairness to the public, that's all.
And I, just, just to be clear, I agree with you a hundred percent. This is pushing the problem down the line, but I just don't think a government body should business engineer a business. I think the businessman should do that. And he's, what, what we're, what I'm proposing would give him a six-month opportunity to solve his business problem. And if he can't, then we need to put it out for bid and we need to do just exactly that. Now, if he can demonstrate in this window of time that he can solve that business problem and he comes back and says, I can do it, but here's my new, here, here's my new business plan and guess what? I can't pay you $3,500 a month under this business plan, but it is beginning to work. The golfers are coming in, they're buying their after-round beers, they're buying their sandwiches. I'm beginning to get more people coming in and I, I agree with you a hundred percent. And we have a responsibility to the, to the citizens to then talk about how can we continue to make that a success if it means reducing rent, if it means doing something, or bid it out with somebody else who can do that. I just, I just feel, don't feel comfortable, we, we approved this. We approved this lease, we saw the business plan. I just don't feel comfortable at this point saying, well, I'm not going to help you any. Let's, I'd rather just give him some time to try to solve his issues, is it? And without me doing it, I don't want to, I don't want a business engineer for him. I don't, I don't think that's a role we should play.
And that's probably what got us into the position we're in now.
Yeah.
That we did business engineer it and we did it incorrectly and people who are not golf people made a lot of those decisions.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
And he could choose not to accept this proposal that's on the floor if it passes.
Yes, indeed.
So then, just correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, but, so we're basically temporarily solving a problem that in six months from now, we're going to have to readdress, correct?
That's what we're saying.
So...
Well, what we're doing is giving him some financial relief so he has an opportunity to solve his problem.
I'm just talking more so about the time. Do, do we want to wait six months? Maybe do, we want to make it three months and then see what he does with it or?
Well, I don't think three months enough. And with the down season for the golf course is now and, and it'll begin to pick up in the fall. It's not going to take as much, anywhere near as much time to transition to a new operator out there because of the structure of the building. I mean, uh...
Right.
As it did the last time. We had to do a gigantic amount of construction out there the last time. So transitioning to a new operator isn't going to take as much time if the current operator decides she can't make it work. And at that point in time, I think we're probably going to have to talk about a, a way to make the, the lease termination as painless as possible on everybody when that takes place and, and then transition. But to me, the summertime is the downtime. And so we're giving him some financial relief, saying, solve your problem.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion?
The golf course has a lot of loans they need to pay back. And if you reduce the rent, they're not going to get that income to pay those loans back. So if you're going to make a change of operators out there, it's better to do it now than down the road.
Well, I agree with the mayor. I don't think we can charge the rent that's in this lease to somebody who can make a business successful out there. I really don't.
Okay, well...
I have, I, I, it would, I mean, if we convert that to a snack bar, they're not going to generate the kind of revenue they generate to do this kind of stuff, I think. I mean, it would be very difficult to do that. So I think if we, if he can't come up with a business model to make it work, I think we really are, as the mayor said, talking about revisioning what we're planning on doing out there and having it bid differently. Uh, and that's going to mean less, less monthly income from the lease on it, probably.
For sure.
So...
Yeah, but we did do a formal appraisal to find out what the going rate should be out there before we went out to bid, keep that in mind.
Yeah, I know. The, the going rate for a, a restaurant down on Indian River Drive and the airports, you know, and that, that's, that's the thing we got caught in the last time.
That's right.
And, and it's a different issue out there. It really is, so. All right.
Oh, you know...
Thank you very much. Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Yovino.
No.
Councilmember McPartland?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
No.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
No.
And Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
The motion fails.
All right, thank you for that. All right, council, I'll lead this up to, actually, I'll, I'll just, I, I think that with that being said, we, we're going to need to... Must be exceptionally loud tonight. But, well...
Thank God.
With that, I would suggest that we, I guess we're going to have to direct the city attorney at this point because it's a little late in the game to, to, but we'd have to direct the city attorney to, um...
Well, that's up, that's up to the leasing. If he wants to, wants to try to terminate his lease, then there's clauses in the lease to do that. It's a standard process, I would think. Yeah.
All right, thank you. Leads us up to item fourteen, City Attorney Matters. Mr. Stokes?
Uh, yes, I, I put the item on, regarding the, the Fire Marshal Letter. Um, you all got a copy. I think it came in the day after our last meeting. I have gone through it. I've also spent many hours watching the two county commission meetings that they had on this item. Watched them, took a lot of notes in formulating a response. I've got that mostly done. I know that we're, we're, we're going to get something together and I'm, I'll, I'll let you all see it and, and at, at your discretion, I could either go ahead and, and send it or I could bring it to the next meeting. You guys could give your blessing to it before it goes out, uh, which actually may be a better way. I, the one thing I would ask, and it's something that, that came to me as I was going through the county commission meetings, the county attorney, uh, who I've gotten to work with a lot and respect a lot, he has certain legal theories as to why the county's right in this case. Unfortunately, through the course of those two public meetings, his commissioners have destroyed almost all of his legal theories with their statements. And that is, you know, one of the pitfalls of being a local government attorney and, and having, you know, elected officials as clients, you know, it, it, that does sometimes happen because the discussions we have, we have to have in public. So, um, you know, if, if, if you want to provide some, some direction to me as far as responding to this, um, if you'd like me to reach out to each of you this week for maybe one-on-one session so I can kind of tell you my thought process individually, we could do that. We could regroup with the letter next, at the next meeting. But what I would hope we could avoid is too much discussion about the actual merits of their case or the merits of our case or the pitfalls of either case publicly because then we would end up doing the same thing that I think the county has done, so.
You don't want us to talk too much. You're just, you're just informing us that you're going to be contacting us individually to discuss this issue and you'll be drafting a letter to present to us at the next council meeting.
Yes.
I, I can give you an example because it's actually one of the points I'm bringing
up in the letters, that the, the county attorney's hanging his hat very firmly on this one statute that says this cannot be done under any circumstance. But then at the meetings, and I'm sure you've all watched them, they sat there and gave the justification that the reason Felsmer can do it and we can't is because they're smaller than we are. Well, that's not in the statute and there's no provision saying that, you know, certain size cities can, you know, if, if that's the theory he's relying on, um, they've, they've kind of destroyed that with their argument of saying the reason they don't want us to do it is because we're a larger city than Felsmer is. So it's that kind of open discussion that is, is hurting them ultimately and they probably really need to stop, but it's good for us, so they, maybe, maybe they should keep talking, I don't know. But, um, but I would like us to not fall into that same pitfall if possible.
Okay, council, I think you probably got what he's saying on that. He's, he's not really opening this up for discussion, but I'm thinking individually he would like to hear from council members or he'll give us all a call.
I, I'm sorry?
He'll give us a call.
I, yes, I will, I will call and, and set something up. Uh, we can either do it by phone or I, what I will do first is I will finish off the letter, which is mostly done, and, and let you see the draft of it and then we can discuss it. And you can let me know if you think I'm on the right track or not.
Okay, I, I, I agree with that, but I think that we should at least indicate to our city attorney that we're intent on this course of action and that we're not intending to bend on the course of action to install our own Fire Marshal.
I think a nod from everyone would, would give him...
Obviously, their problems have been going on since 2013 when Felsmer first did their ordinance, so...
Yeah, okay. Yeah. Because that way, I mean, if you get into discussions with their attorney, you know, you, you have a direction from your client that says they, they want to do this.
Absolutely. When you're driving a bus, it's like nice to know which direction to go, you're right.
Do you have any other, other matters?
No, that, that's it.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Stokes? All right. Thank you, sir. City Manager Matters.
Yes, sir. I have two things. Tonight, the Freedom Shrine presentation, um, I thought very successful in the way the children pulled that off in the exchange club. I would like to invite the public into City Hall to actually view the Freedom Shrine. The location and, uh, City Hall hours, normal City Hall hours, the public can get access. It's on the first deck passageway and easily accessible for the public, so would invite everybody into City Hall to see that. The, um, also, the installation, uh, we had to do some modification to the hallway there to get that done. People in charge of that were Scott Baker, our Facilities Director, and also Jim Testa, who did an absolutely superb job in making sure things were installed in the exact position they were supposed to be. So thank you very much to those individuals. They did a great job, did all the trench work and I really appreciate it. The other thing, I'm going to call Ken Kilgore up here. He's going to make a report on, um, our reimbursements from FEMA. Um, this, uh, this is Hurricane Matthew we're going to zero in on tonight. And frankly, Ken's the one to give this report. I was the one who sprinted the money. He's the person who has recovered the money. So, Ken, take it away.
Thank you, Joe. It was eighteen months ago where we had Hurricane Matthew hit the city. We incurred about $1.7 million in repair costs, debris pickup, including the build, rebuilding of the, of four of the piers. We struggled and we struggled to do the paperwork necessary to get FEMA to sign off on the reimbursements. They go through so many reviews. By the time you think you've just passed the last review, there's yet another layer of sign-off. We worked through almost all of that. The biggest part is, like I said, was the pier claim, which is a total of $1.1 million. This Monday, the 23rd of April, we got the million, or we got our reimbursement for the, our, the FEMA and the state's share of that cost. So all total, total for Matthew, we have received almost $75,000 of eligible costs that, all of these are already in the state of being basically approved to what I think is the final level before they send it to their finance people to cut us a check.
Ken, I don't mean to interrupt you...
I'm sorry, did you say 75?
What was it, what was the total in damages? 1.7 million?
Uh, 1,782,000.
And we recovered everything but 75,000?
Um, well, we've got $75,000 more coming from FEMA and the state.
Okay, so we'll have a hundred percent recovery?
We recovered a million and a half dollars for their portion of it, but remember the city pays the 12 and a half percent of the total. So we're very happy with that. That's about 95% of the money that was incurred.
That's fantastic.
That's great.
We're still working on Irma. Irma has probably 300 to 350,000 dollars of eligible costs. The FEMA rep is working with us on almost a weekly basis to get that paperwork kicked off and, and the mix. So hopefully that won't take eighteen months.
Well, the good news is hurricane season is right around the corner.
I was just going to make that comment, just in time.
Yes, indeed.
But, you know, basically it replenishes our reserves now so that we can feel a little bit more comfortable going into next, next season.
That's fantastic. Thank you very much. Good work.
Thanks to staff for getting paperwork together, assembling things, but a star to Ken for really doing human work on this. really doing human work on this, and that's all I have, sir.
All right, thank you, Ms. Williams. All right, Councilmember Dodd?
Okay, this, in front of us tonight was the 2018 Shrimp Fest Craft Blue Holabalu Recommendations for Distribution of Funds. Is that a final distribution?
I haven't even seen that, sir.
Okay, well, assuming it is, I think it might be nice to get that on the city's webpage, so people can see how much money the Rotary has, or is distributing to these charities as a result of their charitable activity. So, it might be nice to try to get that out there. I had, when I sat down, it's the first time I'd seen it, and it's a very impressive list of funds that they're distributing to various charities and organizations throughout the city, so...
I saw Vice Mayor Kitchen reading it at the beginning, but I'll get your copy and I'll...
No, I've got a copy of it, it was in front of us when we sat down.
Well, if I can get your copy, I'll get it on the site.
Oh, okay, here, I'll set it up here for you. You can get it later.
Yeah, to the tune of over $55,000 to charitable organizations. Solid event. Anything else?
That's it.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Yovino?
I got a couple of things. Locally, Indian River Shores is having a 5K fun run for Special Olympics. This is to benefit, it's a law enforcement torch run, it's statewide, but this is for the Special Olympics for Florida. It'll be this Saturday, April 28th, 2018. So, for all you runners out there, we have a 5K going on at the shores, we'd love to see you there and see your support. Like I said, all the proceeds go right to the Special Olympics, none of it goes back to the department. And I just wanted to make, point out something in regards to all the naysayers on who we chose for City Manager out there. This is Glades County's, one of their main papers, and I'll leave this for those of you that want to see this, but there's an article, front page article, on Paul Carlisle, who's going to be our new City Manager, and they basically begged and pleaded for him not to leave. I think they even, there's, they referred to asking him to work one day a week as a consultant. So, for everyone that, out there that thinks that we didn't make a good decision, I think when you start seeing things like this, I think we've made a great decision, and I'm looking forward to him starting here, so that's all I have.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. McParland?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I have nothing further this evening. Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yeah, I just want to be sure that, I don't know if you got a copy of this drainage complaint, Joe, 1020 Carnation Drive? Could you get somebody to take a look at that and answer, Mrs. Ramona Rodriguez?
Yes, I forwarded that to Mr. Griffin.
Got it? Okay.
Love it.
And then also, I'm looking at the emails back and forth between you and this other gentleman about Southeast and the speed bumps. That's a private development, is it not? But the roads are ours.
The roads are ours. There's an HOA there. That's why I asked the gentleman about what's the HOA position, just query on it, and he took offense to it, I guess, but we did a traffic study out there, and a couple of years ago, I think, year and a half, two years ago, and it warranted the three-way stop, no speed bumps. So, I don't know what more we can do. I have to rely on the engineering traffic study.
Okay.
I can notify the chief about more enforcement and put it on the watch, but she already knows about it, she was getting the same emails.
I was concerned in one of the emails we got, where they wanted to put up a gate and block Fleming Street from going through.
It's not going to happen.
You know, that's a public road. And a very busy public road at that, so...
Anything else?
No, I'm done.
There being no further business, we are adjourned.